Board of Education for October thirteenth, twenty twenty, this is the regularly scheduled meeting. I'll call the meeting to order since we're on Zoom. I think we will dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll move on to public comment. And we do have, as, as our procedure is, is that we've asked anybody who wants to make public comment to please put in writing their comments. Through the superintendent and we will then share them during this period. With the board as well as with people that have called, that have joined us via Zoom. The board members received a copy of the electronic copy of the, of the comments from Shitella. I'm going to mispronounce it, Shabria. Who wrote to us. So I'm going to read this into the record. It's about two pages long, so bear with me and hopefully I won't make too many mistakes. So it's dated October twelfth, dear school board members, I am a parent of a Flanders second grader. I am also an educator myself and have had to switch to remote teaching, albeit with much older students. We moved to this town five years ago and chose it primarily because it has, it is reputed, it is reputed high quality education. Thus far, we have not been disappointed. The teachers are excellent and care deeply about the children. However, upon the onset of the pandemic, in March twenty twenty, I have developed concerns about the district educational plan. Currently, and this is in bold, currently, we are not providing equitable learning opportunities for all of our children. After explaining how this letter concludes with suggestions on how we can use synchronous virtual instruction. That is remote model to generate better learning outcomes in ways that, that minimize Zoom fatigue and enlist the creativity and talents of our teachers. The concerns, what about working families? The remote learning days under the hybrid model and, and the virtual Viking curriculum are simply inadequate. On days my child is, is home and learning remotely, she barely has one hour of schoolwork to do, which includes her morning meeting time. This is, this, how, how is this hybrid schedule supposed to work in households where all the parents have full-time jobs of their own? Number two, what about com- com- completing grade level learning? If it is in fact possible that the children are receiving all the education they need by attending school two days a week. Then why did we ever have a five-day weeks, five-day per-week schedule? How, how will the children be ready for the next grade? Point number three, what about preventing the spread of virus? Finally, regarding our community's health, the hybrid model is meant to contain COVID nineteen. By ensuring that only half of the students are potentially exposed at a time. However, this is only, this only contains a spread, it does not prevent it. And we have seen over the past few weeks, almost every week, one of our district schools have closed. Who do, due to positive cases being found. Unfortunately, the children can become asymptomatic carriers. By the time they develop symptoms and test positive, children can, can transmit the illness to their family members. I understand each family has the option to transmit the illness to their family members. I understand each family has the option to choose virtual Viking for their child. But that is not a fair choice. It forces families predisposed to risk to undertake. An unusual kind of schooling for their child. It also asks each family to weigh health and safety against their child's education. To solve these problems, I would like the, the district to consider switching to an entirely remote instruction. With four to five hours of synchronous learning each day. Below are listed ideas on how to accomplish this, on how to accomplish this. Bullet number one, frequent breaks and small group work. I am aware that some of the families for whom have a child, have child Zoom for four to six hours would be quite difficult. But this is a solvable problem. Remote learning can include ample breaks and non-screen-based activities to prevent fatigue. If every twenty-five minutes, the student had ten to twenty minutes to stretch, to get some water and complete small tasks. They would be able to proceed through a much, through much more of the day. Check-ins. Having, let's see, hang on a second. Having half-day synchronous learning with a check-in in the afternoon might help students know that they are accountable to the teacher. This will require teaching students independent study strategies, which reduce their dependence on at-home caregivers. Bullet number three, non-virtual assignments. I am afraid that in this era of remote learning, we have forgotten the joy of simple paper and pencil. For instance, math and reading workbooks are available for each grade level that can provide at-home assignments for the children. These can be completed in small group sessions and discussed by the teacher again with small groups in the afternoon session. Bullet number four, socially-distanced outdoor gatherings to satisfy social requirements of students. Students can be asked to attend school once every week or two on a staggered schedule to meet their classmates outdoors. In playground for play and group time. This will allow them to cultivate friendships, socialize with peers and to make person-to-person contact with their teachers. But on a limited schedule entirely outdoors, so as to prevent the, to, to limit the spread of the disease. For the majority of the students, we have, having actual class five days a week from the safety of their homes. Will allow their minds to be engaged in the same frequency as they were during non, non-pandemic times. And will create a routine and structure that working families can use. Sadly, the recent decision to, to reduce even the Wednesday synchronous class time is a step in the wrong direction. It is only, it only lessens school at a time when our children need it the most. I am afraid that perhaps those families in which a caretaker is available full-time for the child. May have had their voice heard by the school district more than the working parents who reside in Eastline. Finally, one, one related matter, the Zoom link at, as well as the Board of Education meeting. Schedule should be plainly accessible to all residents of Eastline. As now, the link is very hard to find and the meeting schedule is unreliable. Residents have the right to observe and participate in these meetings. That right can, can only be actualized when you make it a clear and accessible website. With, with up-to-date information. As I hope the board knows, the cases in our area are rising. Rather than deal with an outbreak after the fact, we should switch to remote learning in advance. Prioritize not only the safety of the students and their families. But protect the teachers and staff who face the highest risk since they are exposed to everyone. The suggestion proposed above seems to be in the best interest of the working parents as well as the teachers and families. I hope the board gives it the consideration it deserves. Thank you. Shitella Shabria. That was our public comment for tonight. So we'll move on. We don't have a consent agenda. We have approval of our minutes from September twenty-ninth. Alright.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September, I have thirtieth meeting, is that wrong?
Yeah, that's what I was just, I was just looking.
I gotta look at the calendar.
Yeah.
September twenty-ninth is correct.
Yeah.
September twenty-ninth meeting, if those, that date can just get changed.
A second.
Who seconded? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Candace seconds it. Any, any corrections, modifications to those minutes? All those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Does anybody abstain? Okay, those minutes pass. Apologize, I've got a, my agenda has frozen up for some reason. Okay. Up there. Okay, alright, so we have the minutes approved, our special reports, we do not have a Board of Selectmen representative. Jeff, Jackie, don't see anybody, okay? Um, we'll move on. I do see, I saw Grace, hold on, there she is. We have a representative, is, is the other, is the other high school rep?
Yes.
Okay, good. Who wants to go first?
Um, I can start. So because of the closing of the school. It was kind of a wake-up call to a lot of the students that hadn't really been social distancing or had it, or had thought a little bit. Have like, that weren't social distancing as much as they should have been. Because there's a lot of like tension in our grade almost after that, because especially for, for the upperclassmen. Um, people easily spread rumors about like who had gotten the virus. And then people were like saying it was their fault and stuff, so at first there was a lot of tension, but then after a while. I think people kind of let that go and just realized that we just need to make sure that we're safe about it. And like, it just was a good reminder for some of us. And then a lot of kids were sad that sports had stopped for the high school for these two weeks. But I think kids are starting to adjust to it and understand that this is what's necessary to keep everyone safe. Um, in addition to that, a lot of the kids had a pretty good time adjusting to the education aspect of it. Because a lot of us had already gotten used to like zooming in on some days. And they were also okay with being able to do assignments at home for the days that we don't zoom in, because we, that's what we've been doing. So a lot of, for the education aspect of it, it was a pretty smooth transition. And clubs are still going on through Zoom, which is good, so. A lot of the stuff in the high school is continuing and is pretty, it seems pretty normal, even though this, we're not physically in the building.
So as Grace was saying about the clubs, the class senator and officer selections are still happening virtually. Everyone's going to be videotaping their speeches. And the plan was to display them in advisory for everyone in school. I still think that will be happening virtually. We'll see tomorrow, so tomorrow is the first time we will not be zooming in all of our classes on Wednesday. Um, I think a lot of kids were surprised, but also I've, I've heard mixed things from a lot of kids. But overall, it's been a big adjustment to go all virtual, but students have definitely gotten used to it.
Okay, good. Any questions for our two high school representatives? Ready? No? No? Are Grace's, are sports practices still occurring?
Um, no, not for the high school, so like stuff that, I think, I'm not sure if some practices, like soccer and stuff that you can do outside or cross-country. I think like for cross-country and stuff, some like smaller groups of kids are getting together on their own. But like no practices are being held by like the coaches and stuff. I think.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, it makes it tough. Anybody else? No? Okay, alright, well, thanks a lot. I guess we'll move, move on to our discussion action items for the evening. The first one up for discussion is Eastline Public Schools. Twenty twenty-one continued school progress under instruction, so Jeff, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, we want to discuss a couple of components. Number one, I just want to, you know, thank the girls. I thank the girls as well for, for their comments. You know, sports was tough. And I know we have, you know, spoken with the coaches and, you know, discouraged. We, we don't want them coming together in large groups. I've seen very small numbers interacting or running, you know. But we're really, we're trying to kind of clamp down on, you know, these transmissions outside of school. And hence, that was part of the reason for, you know, going remote with the high school and, you know, concerns over the number and the volume of cases that were, that were present there. So we look forward to getting the high school back a week from this Thursday on the twenty-second. As you saw yesterday, Lily Behance, we had two cases there. We had an additional case this morning at the high school that we found out about. So that was, you know, one that had happened, you know, individuals had been out for a longer period of time. Because they were actually, you know, quarantined themselves because they were a primary contact. So things of that nature help when they're not on-site for, you know, well over a week. So that, that helped. But we're, we're monitoring, so we're, you know, each, it seems each day we're expecting another call potentially. And that's so. You know, overwhelmed with the number of, of calls and contact tracing that they've had to engage in. It's backlog them some, so you know, I'm, you know, with like the, for Lily Behance yesterday, I'm making decisions on the school. You know, before I even have final information from legislature, just knowing, you know, what we know about, you know, what contact tracing is, is needing to take place, just as a, as an extra precaution. So we're hoping, you know, I've got a lot of different feedback, you know, from parents, from, you know, as you heard from, you know, you know, wrote in. Who wants fully in and why aren't we doing that? So, you know, it varies greatly and any changes we make are going to please one group and not going to please another group, sort of thing. So that, that's been challenging. We have talked a lot about the model. We talked last meeting about the Wednesday component. You know, the concerns with the amount of zooming time and zooming in, you know, for kids and, and trying to structure that day a little bit differently. We've also, you know, had some conversations, you know, most recently with the high school as well. Amy and Deb Kelly were on a CIL committee meeting this afternoon. I'm going to turn it over to them to kind of talk about some of the aspects of that, of that meeting, kind of what came out of that. And what kind of the feeling of the high school is at this point. And, you know, where we're kind of leaning towards in the direction and moving forward, starting at the high school level as it pertains to additional zooming in. We'll kind of get into that and then we can answer questions as well. So Amy and Deb, Amy, you want to start up just with that CIL conversation?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So I think what's happening is that we're in the middle point of, you know, initially when we started the school year, we were going into hybrid. And we were going to reassess at the end of the month and see where we were. And now it feels as though, ooh, we might be in this hybrid model a little bit longer than we thought. Or wait, we might actually be moving to full remote a little bit more than we thought. And so one of the things that we've been bringing to admin cabinet now for probably about three weeks. Is let's talk about consistency for students and families and let's talk about how to keep our students. So parents feel and trust that we are providing five days of an education to their child in a respectful way. So we meet, Jeff and I meet with secondary administration, elementary administration and full admin cabinet every single week. And these have been standing topics on those meetings, as well as, as Jeff noted, we've received several parent feedback. But we also receive feedback from our teachers, in particular to what they felt they were not meeting the needs of students on. So one of the conversations that we've been having is to Zoom or not to Zoom, that is the question. And we started the conversation at the secondary level. Because it definitely seems as though at the middle school and high school, you possibly have more independent learners at home. Which may not be as dependent on mom and dad in order to, you know, be successful on a full-day Zoom experience potentially. But also, we got some really good feedback from teachers as well as department heads in regards to thinking about our Wednesday structure. But also today, we talked mainly around, should we allow students to zoom in four days a week? Meaning, you know, the two days that, so if cohort A is on-site Monday and Tuesday, do we allow them to zoom in when they're home on Thursday and Friday? So then it becomes four days of really the teacher, rather than just those two, day one, day two, right? And we really brought to CIL and we're trying to problem solve. And one of the major pieces, I think, that's created urgency around this is, you know, this is round three for our high school on short-term closure. We have not a small group of students quarantining, but a relatively, you know, a good size. And then I also am receiving daily multiple requests from high school parents to move to virtual Viking. So we are seeing virtual Vikings sort of steadily increase every day, and then we see the students in quarantine. So we sort of brought it as a problem really to CILs to say, let's talk about this further in the options. And basically at the meeting today, it was one more of, and Deb can go ahead and chime in with me as well. But basically, it was one of those where the high school teachers are seeing the writing on the wall. That we are most likely going to have, at least for the next, at least for the holidays maybe, this ebb and flow between hybrid and remote. Potentially, whether it's short-term, full or whatever it may be, and how do we provide consistency for students? So we went ahead and identified pros and cons today and went through some guidance. And I left with coming up with some criteria for those two Zoom-in days. And I'm going to be sending that back to the departments in order for them to look at. But it is something that we are, we are really strongly considering implementing at the high school level. As sort of the next phase of our hybrid model, as it seems as though we're going to be in it a little bit longer than. Um, I think we sort of, you know, you got to remember, we went hybrid two weeks before thinking we were all going to be on-site. So now it's a extended time to wrap our head around that. But Deb, I don't know if I missed anything.
Well, I think that for the teachers, first of all, I agree that the number of people who are either virtual Vikings or who are quarantining. That's been a significant change to what the classroom looks like already. And then we've been out, so there's a lot more zooming going on. We also have had, on the four-day weeks, we've had the other group zoom in, so they've had a little bit of experience with that. And it wasn't for some of them as horrible as I thought it was. But I also think that they're looking forward to possibly having the kids have a little bit more structure on the days that they're not zooming in. Because they're high school kids and have a tendency to wait until the last minute to do things. They're having a hard time getting a lot of things done, so I think one of the things we heard today was that it might be nice to get them started during the day. So that they're not waiting until eight o'clock at night to get started.
Yeah, and I think what's important is Deb and I are trying to use the structure of CIL so that we're sort of having them represent their department groups, getting that feedback. Then we go ahead and sort of look at the feedback, then we sort of allow them to be sort of co-designers, if you will, with us in this change. And then like I said, I go and create sort of a document that sets out clear expectations, share it back with the CIL. So they also get the ability to offer further input. And then it's something I would release to the rest, the rest of the teacher population. So it's sort of allowing teachers to be at the decision-making table with us as we move these things forward. Which is very different than in the spring, where we were in such a sense of urgency that we were having to make changes to the model every two weeks. Because we had never run a remote district report. And so this is a little bit more of a bringing them in, so there's, we, we want teachers at the table for these decisions. Because they're going to be the executors of this education, right? And we want it to be the best that we can give to students, so. Um, Jeff?
Just to me, I know the board saw our virtual numbers, we kind of shared that chart. It was either in this past Friday's update or the update before, I can't remember which, but, you know, they, they continue to grow daily. You were well up over, you know, three hundred, you know, students now, over a hundred, you know, at the high school level. And the number continues to rise pretty rapidly, so, you know, it's its own school by far now. So in, in trying to support that the best we can, I think, you know, moving this direction will, will help to do that. And, you know, we value the, the CIL's, you know, opinions on this because they're living it and breathing it. You know, as we've talked about at, at our different meetings here, their input is, is crucial and obviously meet in the needs of kids. And, you know, what's going to work for some, or, or right now, the model is, as is, is working very well for many. Not working for some others, you know, we change it, it's same thing, it's going to work for some and not work for, for others unfortunately. That's the hard part, trying to find that balance. And, you know, with the zooming in, another important piece, another factor is, you know, not just having kids, you know, zooming in for eighty or eighty-five minutes, you know, for a full block. You know, we're talking about, you know, changing that structure where, you know, maybe they're zooming in for, and this would be, you know, the, the recommendation to teachers, zoom in for fifteen or twenty minutes. Then send them off, you know, to do their work, so they're not necessarily, you know, maybe in front of the screen. And then bring them back the last fifteen minutes for further discussion or follow-up at the end of the, end of the lesson. So why don't we pause there? I think Eric's got his hands up and I don't know if anybody else has some questions too, we can kind of talk.
Go ahead, Eric.
Alright, thanks and, thanks Amy, Deb, Jeff. I mean, I know, you know, a lot of work went into the hybrid model and, you know, I, I thought it was good plan. In my head, I didn't real, I just didn't anticipate this constant day closing here and a day closing there and two weeks there. I was kind of thinking it was either in or out. And I, I think I kind of didn't think that through. And now where we are in, in living this, this is closed today and that one's closed tomorrow and this is closed for two weeks. I kind of, you know, for me, I'm taking a step back and saying, okay, what's, what do we need to do? And so I, where I would want to start is at the high school, which is, you know, the most complex and the easiest. Easiest because they're older, so there's a little more that we can do. Most complex is you have more students with more classes and more different teachers and stuff. So what I'd like, you know, where I'd start is, you know, why aren't we at five days a week? Having a normal schedule. And the schedule where it flexes is, we don't know if they're going to be in or out of school. We know cohort A, I, I keep the cohorts, cohort, I, I don't know, the Wednesday I got to think about. But cohort A, cohort A, when we're in class, they're there Monday, Tuesday. If they're closed, then they're all zooming in, but cohort B is zooming in, kind of what you described. But I, I would be just a normal, start with a normal day, you know, for high school, seven-thirty to two-ten or whatever it is. With the blocks and, and all that. And then I work a little backwards from there because I like the idea of breaks from Zoom. I like longer breaks maybe in-between classes, so maybe instead of whatever they are, eighty-five-minute classes, maybe they're seventy-five-minute classes. There's just longer breaks that students can go for a walk, get some food, use the restroom, whatever they need to do to kind of, kind of re-energize before their next class. That's where I'd want to start from, is that we're back, because, you know, when we go to this two weeks off, I think. I don't, I didn't have a better solution, but I don't think our solution of just kind of trying to keep everything going is great. So that's, that's where I, I would go five, the Wednesday, and I don't think Wednesday should be an off day. I think Wednesday should be a school day. And if everybody has to zoom in one day a week, if that's the best thing and, and classes are, everyone is Zoom. And I think everybody should be Zoom. And the other thing I would say is cameras are on, full stop. There is no reason, I mean, it has to be, you know, approval by Deb or something like that. Or one of the assistant principals on what, you know, if there's a special situation for a student. But you can put a fake background on, you could put it on mute, but if you're on video, you're, you're much more present. Than if you're hiding behind your name on a screen and, you know, dialing in and then doing whatever you want, which. So that, that would be my view, is we need, we need the students engaged and I think cameras on helps engagement, whether you're in the class or out of the class. And I'd like to go see about full-time, so that's where, that's where I'm going towards the high school. It gets more complicated for the middle school and elementary. I don't think in elementary, I don't think that's the answer for elementary schools. So there may be different models, different schools, but that's where I would start with the high school.
Okay, Candace, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so complicated all the way around, so I, I think that there's, there's so many layers to the high. So I, I think that there's, there's so many layers to the hybrid. And I, I think that the Wednesday piece, this current change, this most recent change, really threw quite a few people for a loop. And to be honest with you, I think that it's just all of the changes, all of the, you know, all of the different things that we can't count on, the constant shifting, this constant pivoting. So there's a lot of frustration in general, I think. I think people are, are fearful. That's what I'm getting a lot of, that, that a lot of times I'm reading comments or I'm seeing comments or I'm hearing them one-on-one, and a lot of it is just, it's driven from fear. There are people are afraid that their children are not getting educated enough or that they're not getting enough. They're fearful that we're, their children are not going to be able to progress because this is not normal. The way that this is happening is not normal. There's no perfect answer and we have to keep trying to shift to, to, to make it work and to balance. But I think the most recent, this full move to remote from the high school, I do, I can agree with Grace that I think that it was a wake-up call, right? For not just the kids, but I think for everybody and how quickly this can change. And we all have to adapt. Everyone is in a different experience. Everybody has different challenges and that's what I'm seeing a lot of. So the one parent or the 10 or even maybe the 15 that just want their kids back to school. They want their kids back to school, okay? And the person two doors down are very concerned because maybe they know somebody that's gotten sick from COVID and maybe they have recovered or maybe they've lost somebody to COVID. So it hits them a little bit differently. And then maybe three doors down, maybe that family is really struggling because it might be a one-parent home and that parent has to work. Maybe they're a nurse, maybe they're hitting the strike zone right now because they have to. And, you know, they're getting mandated in for 16-hour shifts or 18-hour shifts and they can't get home. And then when they do get home, you know, they have all of these other different things that are expected of them. So I think that a lot of the different things, at least that I'm seeing and hearing, and, and not just from families, but from teachers too, right? Is that we hope we're, we're doing everything that we possibly can. I feel like the kids should be doing as much in-person or in, is it asynchronous, right? Where they're, they're, they're mostly involved with their teachers the, the most that they possibly can. So if you're taking the Wednesday away essentially, what are those other days going to look like? I think that that's where Amy was talking about the four days and how it's structured. There's really no perfect answer, but I, I do feel like, I feel like the kids need, I think they need more. But then at the elementary level, it has to be a different way because it's really expectant on the parent to be home or the guardian or the caregiver to be helping those children. And a lot of the, or some of the feedback that I've gotten from families is the, the want to get the kids back to school because they think that that challenge is going to be eliminated, but I think it's just going to add more challenges. So I don't, I certainly don't have the perfect answer. But this is why we all talk about it and we try to find what's the best fit for us. And I know that everybody's heart and, and thoughts are in the, the right direction.
Yeah. Thanks, Candace. Barry, you had your hand up.
Sure. It's always tough here to follow Eric and Candace because your points are so well-articulated, insightful and on point. But we, I just want to, a couple of thoughts that came to mind. The thing I want to do is thank Chatelle for her letter. I think it was very much on point and the time it took her to compose that and submit it, I think, was really great and is much appreciative. And Chatelle, what you articulated was also in line with what I've been hearing from any parents who've been cornering me at soccer games and baseball games and, you know, talking about the issues. Also reminded here as part of this discussion, what Amy was talking about last year, last week, when, last meeting, when teachers were talking about the frustration of having to do with multi-layers. You know, there were like so many different formats that they had to deal with. And I think some of the ideas that Chatelle brought up can help address that. The, of course, I went back to the research and I'm looking at like, you know, what are the things that best enhance kids' learning? One of the things that really struck me as I went through that was the power of what's called the parent, the, the student-teacher relationship. That what happens with students is when they engage with teachers that have empathy and warmth and encourage their thinking, what process occurs is that the students actually start to incorporate and identify with the values that the teacher, values of scholarship, curiosity and questioning that the teacher's model. And so they basically start to incorporate this mindset, this habit of mind of how to become a good learner, a good rigorous learner. That gets lost when we throw them into an asynchronous model and on their, on their own. So I've been thinking in line with, again, the ideas that Chatelle and other parents have brought up, the problem multi-layering and how to best keep students in contact with teachers so they incorporate the values of rigorous learning that the teachers are modeling. And I also talked to other districts around to see what they're doing and what success they're having. And all those sources seem to point to the idea of increasing the, the online presence. So we could actually have, instead of having the two days of students on their own, we could have those students zoom into the classroom where the other hybrid is. And so the five days, we have students in, engaged with, you know, some in-class students, some on Zoom, but all the students are engaged in the same process. That eliminates the multi-layering that teachers have. It helps build up the, the future student relationships that are necessary. And it also helps us get some bang for the $28,000 we're investing in Zoom that I think, you know, if we're not using it fully, we're not making the best use of that investment. So for all these reasons, I'm all on favor of going to a five-day Zoom model where we have kids sometimes, you know, maybe some kids in, in the classroom, some kids on Zoom, but everybody is engaged in the same process with the teachers.
Well said, well said. Jill or John, I can't, I don't see you. So I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add to the conversation.
Good.
You're good. Okay, John. And Jill, are you, are you there?
Sorry. Yes, I'm fine. I'm just, I'm just listening.
Okay. Very good, very good. Good. Kate?
Well, just real quick, I think that in some ways it gives us the opportunity to look at how we're teaching and thinking about units in terms of not grade level, but competency. So it might be an opportunity to rethink what the ratio of teacher to student is and how that instruction goes on and having stored instruction. I think this is all going to be an entire process. And, you know, we're just seeing where we're going to probably have our second wave of COVID-19. So I think as much planning and using as many of the resources as possible is really a good idea and opening up the locations as well so people can be safe.
It's interesting, Kate. I just made a comment the other day to Jeff about the fact that, you know, we are, we are at the mark where our teachers have been, you know, in remote or hybrid more than they've been, they've taught onsite. So it's almost like the onsite model is going to become the unknown model eventually because they haven't, they won't have taught, you know, in that model within, within the course of that year. But.
And I think trying to avoid, you know, as much confusion as possible because we are, we're flipping, this is going to continue. We're going to flip back and forth between, you know, having a building either onsite or out for two days. You know, the Wednesday has helped us some because Lily Behan's probably would be, you know, potentially would have been out, you know, tomorrow as, as well if they couldn't get contact tracing done. But not confusing people and trying to keep a rhythm going of some sort, I think, is helpful too when they're in or they're out or not knowing and parents not knowing whether they got to get daycare or not or childcare for the next day. It, it just puts another burden, another layer of, of burden on, on folks. And, you know, it's, it's just interesting too, when you look at the districts, you know, out there that are fully zooming in, you know, it's not a pretty picture either. You know, they're, they're getting a lot of negativity from parents wanting, you know, to change the model of just simply zooming in constantly because it's not working. Their kids are disengaging, you know, quite a bit because it's just a constant in front of the computer. That doesn't work for a lot of kids. So what is the happy medium, you know, and we're, we're trying to figure out and find? Hence trying to work, you know, start at that high school level, break up the, the constant Zoom call, you know, and maybe have some breaks in between, like, you know, was mentioned. That, that's what kids need. Can't just sit there for five hours in front of a screen. That doesn't work well for adults.
So what then, so the, what's the, so what's the big picture game plan here? We're going to focus on the high school first? Is that, that's what I, I, I heard? And you're seriously considering going to a four-day model? Is that, is that what I'm, I'm hearing? You're, you're thinking about that, but you, you're going to have conversations with teaching staff to make sure that everybody has an opportunity?
Yeah. So now is there, try to provide consistency between hybrid and the remote model. So almost mocking what the remote model would be in hybrid, meaning that four days, full days. So whether you're onsite full two of the days or whether you're home all four of the days, you are with teachers all day long for four days. The requirement from the State Department is when you're in a full remote model is that students must have five hours of engaged learning and that can include synchronous or asynchronous. We are choosing to have a full day, four days and go over that because we want students, like Eric said, we want to norm them on a full day of school. You are in a full day of school. But one of the things that we got loud and clear from the teacher survey, and Candace, you were going there a little bit in regards to the family dynamics, is but our teachers also need time, a time when they can also connect with individual and small group students so they're not losing students during the course of a week, which is where the change in the Wednesday schedule came. So that at the high school level, there could be an advisory meeting in the morning and then our teachers can then reach out and do that individual small group so that then there's a, I'm not losing this student or I need to connect with this group or that, you know, that Zoom didn't go so well. So maybe I need to pull that group back in and we need to connect on a Wednesday. And also the complexities of what some of our students are dealing with, you know, even just on this two-week remote, we have 16 students that struggled with Wi-Fi connectivity already and just being fully remote. So how do we support those students so that they're set up for success and make sure that they're all set to go? So, yeah, the big picture is to now, instead of looking at the hybrid against onsite model, is now we need to shift our thinking to hybrid connecting to remote. So should we need to move in a remote? You can vary consistently because the structure is the same.
Got it. Okay. Good. Eric, you got your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. Just, and appreciate all this. And I think we're a lot talking very the same. There's a couple of things that I wanted to check on. So the Wednesday, that thought of four-day week versus five-day week, which I think I'm okay with, I probably prefer a five-day, but, but let's say we go four-day and the, the Wednesday is not, is the Wednesday, I guess what I would like, because you kind of started going there, is, is there going to be formalized, so let's say I have 20 students in a class that over three weeks, I have one-on-ones over a few, I don't know how many weeks it would take, but a few weeks each week, I might have a one-on, every Wednesday, I have a one-on-one with, you know, five students from that class. And then the next week, it's another different five students. So that I am actually having some one-on-one time with each, not only ones who volunteer, kind of make it more of the mandatory piece of it. Is that a little, Amy, is that what you're?
We, we have not mandated that they must see every student. We have given them the autonomy to pull in one-on-one in small groups, the classes and students that they need to see. As of right now, we have not mandated that they must make it through every student.
So I would recommend, the only thing I worry about is that quiet student who's struggling or may not, you may not notice because they're getting 80s or something, but they, they really should be getting 90s or some, you know? So I think that, and definitely, and the students who are getting, and I'm using grades just because it's a, I could say just they get the material, they kind of get the material or they don't get the material. I, obviously the ones who aren't getting it, I think you'll, hopefully the teachers are going to reach out to and try to help them out. But I don't want to lose the, the others as well and, and make sure. And that's where the, and you guys are more knowledgeable than this, but in, in work, I, I would have a, I have a one-on-one with everyone who reports to me, you know, regardless of some people don't need it as much as others. But I just, you stay connected, you'll, you see what they're just talking through and hearing from them and just knowing you have the time, you know, if I'm with the teacher, I have the time. Might say, bring some topics, you know, what are you struggling with? What questions do you have? And really get them to engage that way would, I think, would be great. And that might advance some of the learning and education because now I almost have one-on-one or if it's one-on-two, I prefer one-on-one. The other question, so that would be my preference if that's the Wednesday, what Wednesday looks like is that there's more one-on-one time and, and almost towards mandatory, if not mandatory. The other, which we, I just want to check on the, the video because I feel really strongly about videos on. And I think it helps, not only it doesn't help the student, because I talked to teachers. Let me tell you, teach, I can only imagine teaching to a screen of names where you can't see a person. I think it's got to be just almost impossible. It's so hard. It's blind, you're, you're teaching blind. So is, are we going to have mandatory cameras on or are we pushing towards that or moving towards that? I'd be interested in that conversation.
In Amy's, last week, Amy, you want to mention what you're in and then, you know, the teachers are pushing it.
Yeah. So that was a big item for the teacher survey is that the district needed, that they asked, that I included in the parent letter that I sent last week, that that was changed too, that cameras are on and that you are going to start noticing that teachers at the start of a lesson, throughout the lesson are going to be telling students, you need to have your video on for this task. And that could also be integrated into part of our participation and our task completion piece of it. So I did publicly do that. That was something the teachers very strongly asked me to do. But at the same, we also acknowledge there are individual students that can't have their videos on or, you know, it's part of their plan and we understand the circumstances. So please reach out to your teacher, you know, should your student be in that circumstance? Because obviously we don't want to force anybody's accommodation if they have one. But that, because Eric, that's one of the things I saw on that Wednesday. I was in 11 classrooms and 10 out of the 11 were the black abyss.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Good. Well, that, that's great. And, and we've taught students who, you know, may not want to show what's going on behind them, how to use the green screen and all that stuff. They're all, okay. So it's more the ones who are in, it's, it's for their personal situation and learning and whatever, but not just, I don't feel like having it on. And, and I think if we can, you know, again, if we get the maturity of the students, especially that, you know, if you need to turn it off for two minutes or whatever, you know, that's okay. Like I, you know, I might be in this meeting, I might turn it off for two minutes because I'm running to get a glass of water or something like that. And that, that, that's okay because we're going to trust each other and be mature and that's okay. You respect me, we respect, you know, each other and all that stuff.
One of the things that we started, teachers were commented in the survey about happening is that a student might have had their camera on and then they shut it off. And then they also aren't verbally interacting. So then it's like, I lost you. So were you there? Were you not there? So now it's a follow-up, either chat in Google Classroom or email to the student like, can we connect? Are you okay? Like, so some resetting of norms and then backdrop mini lessons certainly are something that we're, we're sort of helping teachers navigate and making sure they're teaching students those skills. But I do know five high school teachers, because they're remote, noted today that, oh yeah, I have way more cameras on today than I did last week when they were zooming in. I'm like, all right, good.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Amy. That's, that's great to hear.
You're welcome.
Good. Jamie, before I turn, I'll turn over to you. But Kevin, Kevin Siri has just been able to join us as this selectmen representative. And Kevin, can you hang on until we finish this, this one agenda topic? And then we can, we can. And then we can, uh, we can, we can hear your report?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Jamie?
Thanks, Kevin. So I wish, I'm glad you cannot hear the response from my daughter right now because she's, she's really not liking what we're saying here. Um, but Amy, can I get an example of what you would think a full day of high school Zoom, a full day of middle school Zoom, and a full day of elementary Zoom would look like for parents and students?
As a walkthrough right now, or do you want me to include that in my?
No, I would like to know what it would look like. So like, so tomorrow, seven thirty in the morning, the high school kids are going to zoom on to advisory for twenty minutes, thirty minutes? I can't remember what the email said. And then what happens?
So what would happen is that their teachers in their Google Classroom would work, posted, and or a continuation of what the work was, or they may even invite your child to an individual Zoom.
Okay.
Small group Zoom, or a whole group, depending on the, so the students, so that's part of the advisory, is sort of the stage setting for the day. Okay, guys, do you know what your, their work is? Have you logged into Google Classroom? Have you done your attendance for today? Let's make sure you're all set up for success today. And then you'll notice that some of the assignments will be due by two ten.
Okay.
To encourage an accountability, that at the end, there's, there's an expectation of things being done.
Would those Zoom invitations be happening at the scheduled time the class should have been held, or are they just going to be random times?
Correct. So in order, so one of the pieces of feedback students gave us from the spring is we needed to keep on schedule because you're confusing me with the office hours, because my bio teacher and my geometry teacher and my English teacher are all holding office hours at the same time, so I don't know where the heck to go.
Okay.
Things that was agreed upon at the high school is, okay, but if you're going to pull your kids to do an individual or a small group or a whole group, you have to do it during the time you would have seen them on a half day schedule. So that's not pulling kids and making them have to choose between.
Yeah. Okay. And then at the middle school level, they're doing their advisory at eight thirty?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen. And then from there, their teachers that they would normally be at would invite them to a Zoom? If they had the Zoom schedule?
Yes. So then it would be the same exact structure. So if a teacher's going to pull kids in, it's going to be during that half day period when they would see them. And any worker and do are all in the Google Classroom, and that's the purpose of the class meeting in the morning. Making sure that Kiva is set up, who needs what, what's due when, and setting the marker for the day.
And then at the elementary level, you're doing that twenty minute Zoom at nine oh five, like they're normally doing. And then what happens after that?
At nine, so it's a half hour, it's till nine thirty five.
Yep.
And and those students will be working asynchronously on individual, uh, whether it be tasks that are directly assigned to individuals, like I just saw two as a sample coming in, that like a teacher has three different math groups. So there's three different math tasks being done, depending on what what, uh, group the child's in. And everything is posted on CSO, um, with reference and what needs to be done.
So we're not seeing those kids coming back in for individual lessons after their thirty minute advisory, or are we?
Uh, they could. Teachers can go ahead and pull in individual and small group students. I like, I saw a third grade, uh, teacher that sent a message tonight to her parents saying, I am going to connect with my literacy groups from ten to ten forty five tomorrow. And she gave three different timeframes to connect with three different groups.
So then, when we're talking about going all remote, are we thinking that the class would start at seven thirty, the teacher would teach a lesson like twenty minutes, and then send the kids off to complete it, and then come back for questions at the end? Like, how are we thinking that would work?
Um, if we are, if we go fully remote, the middle school and high school would be full days right now on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So they would be in seven thirty to two ten, or, you know.
But they would sit there for eighty five minutes and listen to a lesson?
No. So what we want to reinforce to teachers is they, we have to remember that we need to chunk out the lessons, and we need to pick and choose, when's it appropriate for kids to be on Zoom? Versus when should they be in a breakout room? Versus when should they be off the camera? And chunk out that eighty five minute block.
Okay, so it wouldn't be just a student sitting here for eighty five minutes listening to a teacher talk? Because I have to say that
Correct.
you're going to lose a lot of people.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I I just, I'm trying to picture in my head how it's going to run, because I know that me sitting here for eighty five minutes, I start to lose focus, and I can't even imagine what a child would do, losing focus, and then doing that from seven thirty to two ten?
I mean, think of that, that's taking education backwards, where you're going back to, you know, whole child, you know, teacher in front of the classroom, teaching and talking the whole class. You know, that that's not the model of instruction, you know, we, uh, we want to see occurring. So we want, that needs to be broken up at chunked time for multiple.
Kate, Kate, and then Candace.
I just wanted to get a picture of what it would look like. Thank you.
That's good, Jamie. Kate, and then Candace.
Amy, um, I think you and I spoke about project based learning, and I'm wondering if, wouldn't that be a good place to plug some alternative, almost like Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts, where, you know, you have your agenda, you have your learning outcomes. But if the kids could do projects, and that was the kind of instruction intervention I did in the work that I did, where you would have a different way of maybe showing demonstration of the skills that you're trying to teach. And I think that we do have all kinds of learners, and that might be a break. But maybe we've already talked about it, and that's part of the process.
No, I think, I think, you know, I was in an integrated science class, actually was probably one of the best observation visits that I did, because I got to see an integrated science class at two different levels. But how they basically create a week long learning cycle, and it's really off of a scientific problem. And then what they have is they have the work paced out with, here's things that you can do individually and at within, and it was like three layers deep. If you're here, these are tasks. If you're here, these are tasks. But then also what they did was, at the end, um, you know, they use the Zoom as a, the students were presenting to each other. Um, and they went public on their learning. So really, on the Zoom, the students ran the the entire Zoom. Which is part of the problem, the project based, right? Go public at the end and that larger piece.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm just really almost thinking of it as kind of a creative opportunity to rethink how we do instruction and total paradigm shift. It's going to be a whole new world that we're looking forward to. But I I just think projects, and Jeff and I had a conversation the other day about public private partnerships and more skill, you know, building skills into real applicable, um, um, outcomes. And especially at the high school level, not so much middle school. But if these kids have all this downtime, it just seems like we could do some other things. So, but you guys are doing great. Just other ideas.
Very good, Kate. Like Candace?
Okay, so just two things. Um, first, I just want to thank everyone, um, for their continued dedication and commitment to trying to find the best fit for our community, for our kids, for our families, for our teachers. Um, and the best learning model. I mean, I think that we're just, we're learning as we go, and we're shifting and, um, having the ability to listen to people and the feedback, and being able to modify and and being open um, to different ideas and thinking out of the box. I think we're gonna continually get there. I just think it's, to say it's hard is just such an understatement. It really is. Um, so I thank you all. I'm going to take the opportunity to talk about the survey, that I think it's important, um, to do that with our families. It may be not be the right time right now, but I know that it will not get lost. Um, I do think that it's incredibly important because that feedback is really going to help all of us and our administrative team, um, curriculum team, everybody to really fully understand kind of where people are at, where our kids are at, what they're getting from the instruction that is being given to them, or maybe what they need a little bit more of. So I just want to put that out there again. Thank you.
Good. Excellent. Excellent. So, uh, so Jeff, um, anything, you've gotten lots of, uh, lots of feedback on this topic from the board members.
Yeah, and all of it's helpful. You know, we keep trying to to gather, you know, as much as possible from all all realms and and just try and modify and adjust as we move forward, which we'll continue to do.
Jeff, could I ask you a question, please?
Yeah, Jill, sure.
So I just, you had made a quick comment at the beginning about, it seems like, uh, all the school systems in our area are experiencing the same things, getting responses back from parents. They don't like this, they worry about that, they want this, they want, because I was just curious. You're pretty much hearing the same thing at other school systems throughout, from parents throughout the southeastern Connecticut. Is that correct? Or correct me if I'm wrong?
No, that that's exactly correct, Kate. I mean, the models work for some, and they don't work for others. So when it's working for 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 some, you know, we we're not hearing from folks, but when it's not necessarily working for others, um, based on either their child's experience, or, um, you know, their their home setup. Um, if they're not there to support their child, it it doesn't work. Um, so, you know, a-again, every school district is dealing with, there's, there's no district that I know of that isn't dealing with issues, um, whether they're have zooming in all the time or doing different models. Um, it's problematic everywhere, because it's not in-person instruction, you know, five days a week.
Yeah.
It's kids.
All right, one more question. How is the staff holding up? I'm talking about the front line, the teachers in the trenches. How are they holding up? Um, Amy, I don't, whoever wants to give me any answer to that, I would appreciate it. I.
We we both can. I mean, you know, it it's, it's been an ongoing struggle, uh, you know, and the constant, you know, change and jumping back and forth between models too is is very problematic. You know, we're trying to get it, like yesterday, for instance. I was scrambling yesterday to try and get, you know, information out as quickly as possible to staff and parents so they could prepare. I mean, staff need to prepare a different lesson setup, you know, for when they're working remotely potentially versus, you know, being onsite. So and they need time to do that. And it's, it's, you know, it's a holiday, it's not a a workday. So it's, it's problematic, but they're, they're doing their darndest, and everybody's working hard at it.
Yeah, and I I would say, Jill, that we need to just continue to keep teachers at the table with us as we look at shifts in the model, because they're on the front line, making those shifts within hours to activate. And I think the more that we validate what we're hearing and make sure that we're moving in a direction that they feel they can be successful in, it will create a better experience for the children of East Lime. Because if our teachers don't feel successful, or if they don't feel that they can provide the expectations that we've set, um, that's a really hard place to be with, especially at the high school, you know, a hundred and twenty five students, you know, it's, or, you know, being on the front end. I think everybody is showing up every day, doing the best they can, but everyone's also beating themselves up for what they they're, they can't provide, because we've never done it before.
That's what I worry about so much. You always blame yourself first. And you can't do that. This is hard. Okay, thank you for your answers, guys.
Okay, good, good. So Jeff, you'll keep the board fully appraised of, uh, the adjustments that you'll be seriously considering, and it sounds like it's first at the high school, and I'm sure then it'll work its way down into the middle school, and then adjustments at the elementary as well. So, that sound right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, let's, um, if everybody, if hopefully nobody will disagree, but, uh, Kevin Siri was, uh, uh, able to to join us, but not at five, obviously. Um, and he does have some things that he would like to share with us. And so if if he could have the floor here, uh, to do the selectman representative special report, um, that would be great. Kevin?
Just talking to myself. Thank you. Uh, just real quick to, and I just got some update on Halloween from Ledlight and so forth, which, well, I'll say that to the end because it'll be amusing. Um, as everyone knows, just a quick update, the public safety, uh, building, the referendum passed. Contracts in hand, that'll be signed by tomorrow. Building committee meets Thursday, which they'll, uh, start moving forward with that. Basically, to, uh, with that, uh, money that was moved around from the AFSMA, uh, one point two went to the building, and a little over three hundred thousand. We moved to contingency, uh, recommended moving contingency. Uh, Board of Finance will take that up tomorrow night. Uh, because we don't know some of the costs coming up. Uh, there's some really good suggestions for police cameras and stuff like that. But the cost for that is different. We don't have really hard costs, so we felt putting that in contingency right now would be readily available when the time comes. So for that, um, still sticking with money, Parks and Rec, um, finished up the year. Off about thirty thousand dollars in the hole from, uh, where they, uh, would have liked to have been. If you take out the out of town seasonal passes, that's the money right there. That pretty much makes up for it. We pretty much sold out all the weekend and weekday, uh, out of town passes, because there were ten per beach. And those all went, uh, pretty well. They were fifty dollars and forty dollars, fifty for weekends, forty for the day. Very few, almost no one complained about that, because they come with a carload of five or six people, and they would spend the whole day, so it was fine. Um, COVID, as we know, it's moving up, uh, today, uh, the positive testing rate statewide was, uh, up at two point four percent. And a few weeks ago, we were down at zero point, point zero six, or point six percent. So it's going up, and East Lime has, uh, seen a significant spike over the last couple of weeks as well. Uh, finally, uh, some recommendations from, uh, Connecticut Department of Health for Halloween. They said traditional trick or treating, this is, this is actually, uh, I just got this earlier today, or late, not too long ago. Traditional trick or treating is considered a high risk activity, so they're, uh, recommending, uh, putting trick or treat where goodie bags or a large bowl are placed outside of your home for families to grab and go while continuing the social distance. Uh, if you're preparing goodie bags, wash your hands, basically everything we've been doing. Um, if you are going to choose to hand out candy, make sure you you're six feet apart, so you'll have to have a basket with a wand or something that, or just, you know, I've seen the chutes where you put it in, and it rolls down or something like that, if you want to do that. Uh, and they also recommending, if you are going to put it, they're set up hand sanitizing stations outside your house, so after they get your candy, they can sanitize. Uh, costume mask should not be considered a substitute for the face mask. So if you have a mask on, put the, you know, your, uh, face mask, your, uh, surgical mask, whatever you have over that, and don't wear rubber masks at all. So they think, well, put the rubber mask on, they'll be, they're not recommending anybody wear a rubber mask because of the perspiration and so forth like that. So those are the recommendations for Halloween this year, so I thought I'd end on that note. And if there are any questions, be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Kevin? Anybody? Yeah? Okay.
All right, thanks then.
Yep, thanks a lot, Kevin. Okay, let's, um, we'll move on to our next item under, uh, finance facilities and communities, and that's the update on the COVID nineteen district expenses, cost projections, and grant funding. So Jeff, you want to?
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, give an update on this. Um, there's been a couple ups, there's been some some downs. Um, I won't go through all of them, but I just wanted to highlight a couple. Um, we, with PPE, I think we've got the final, you know, numbers in there, and we're, as we monitor, you know, for, like, for instance, you know, masks. Uh, we're not using as many as we, you know, anticipated we might use, so, uh, that, uh, that that's a good thing. Um, but there were, the final components of purchases came in since the last, um, review of this, uh, which, so it's up three thousand, you know, for, uh, with the change. New column on that sheet, you can see Mariana put on a change since last report to make it easier for you to, uh, to view that. Um, structural supplies, you know, we're down, just not needing as many as anticipated. Uh, the big one I wanted to just bring to your attention was the personnel, uh, with virtual Viking, you know, and the virtual side of things. Um, you know, we were scrambling, um, prior to, you know, the last time this came out, we're still trying to fill last couple of positions. So we, right now, we've got all of our teaching positions filled, as well as our our pair of positions filled. Um, but there's an uptick uptick, you can see, for adding, um, you know, those final, getting those final staff in place. Um, we're nervous that this is gonna, well, it's probably, it's going to go up higher. I think our, the numbers keep climbing. You know, we've got class sizes now, for instance, you know, fourth grade, the virtual fourth grade class has twenty nine students. And it, uh, grade two has, uh, what was it, Amy? I think twenty, twenty six or twenty seven, somewhere in there. Yeah, those are high numbers. They have a pair, you know, supporting them, but, you know, you're upwards of, you know, twenty nine kids in a fourth grade class, e-even though it's virtual, i-is a lot. So we're watching that closely and trying to make determinations if these numbers climb even higher. What are we going to, uh, end up doing? Um, is it going to be bringing on, you know, additional support staff or another teacher? So we're watching that, uh, that carefully. Um, unemployment is down twenty thousand. Mariana, I just want to mention you. want to mention you, you mentioned unemployment was down, the reason for the $20,000 reduction?
So just based on what we received in the last, because they're they're like two to three months behind. So I was using the only, the last statement I had was June. So we got July in, so it was a little bit lower, which I anticipated it, but again, I didn't have solid numbers. So based on July's numbers, I think that's roughly where we're going to be. Again, assuming, this is assuming we continue in the hybrid model. If something changes and we go fully remote, then that might change again. But as of right now, based on what I'm, our July bill, that's why it went down.
So, um, that 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 captures, you know, some of the the bigger, the bigger, biggest increases, the staffing component. And we're going to continue to monitor, you know, those numbers. As we know, as I mentioned, they're going up. And then the grant component as well, you know, Mariana's been working on and the state has given some more flexibility and being able to reallocate funds in different areas. Case hence, and, you know, transportation, being able to move dollars that we might not need that are reimbursable through transportation or that we could get through the relief acts and moving them over to other areas where we do need money. Mariana, I just want to hit upon that because I know you've already cleared that process.
Yep. So we, I put in, submitted the application, it's being reviewed right now. Because most of the districts, there was a big, you know, when we did the initial estimate, there was a different thought, you know, we were going to need more buses, et cetera. So most districts, things have changed and really, we're all looking that we need more personnel. So the state has had us submit our grant with what our current allocation is, but I submitted and as did most districts, a request within that same submission to reallocate dollars to personnel where we could really use them, like the, you know, the virtual Viking, which at that, you know, when we were doing this, we didn't initially anticipate a need for that. So I'm waiting to hear back on the approval for that, but it's in process right now. And then we did get approved for the other grant, the ESSER grant. So that's ongoing. And then the unemployment grant, which initially had been, we were waiting for checks, the way it was supposed to work was unemployment was supposed to give us a check after we paid our bill. The checks weren't coming, weren't coming. So finally, in the last bill, there was a, on August 3rd, the president passed, uh, some type of changed it so that now they're giving us the credit right on our bill, which works out much better. So that we'll see each month, our bill will be reduced by half. And I think that's about it.
So we're going to bring this to the Board of Finance tomorrow and and share it with them at at their meeting as well and just continue to keep them updated on two of these these changes and adjustments. Jamie?
So I'm just making sure that I'm reading this right. It's that we are, we have a little over 1 million shortfall because of all these COVID expenses, is that correct?
Yeah, basically, you're looking at, you know, an additional cost of, you know, just over a million dollars projected. Again, you know, projected number.
Well, projected, right. And I know we had talked at one of our previous meetings about asking for some of that FEMA emergency money, but it went to the public safety building instead. But Kevin mentioned that there is a $300,000 for possibly going to contingency. And I know that doesn't even touch it. And I know we've frozen everything. Any other ideas on how to make up that one point, something million?
Well, the freeze is definitely going to help. Also, the money, remember, we we gave back close to about a half a million dollars at the end of last year. So we've already to the town, hey, maybe we apply some of that.
Was none of that earmarked for the for the lawsuit that we have going forward or no?
There was, we had some earmarked, but we had, we had an allocation that wasn't part of that.
Correct, 47,000.
Yeah.
That was Towards the lawsuit or towards the residual?
Towards.
Towards the lawsuit, okay.
So, you know, between those two, there's one other, there's a third one. And oh, and this, this reimbursement, the grant, the the funding from these.
The grants.
Yep, the grants. So between the three of those, I hope that would really take a big chunk out of, you know, what our final, you know, number might be. But, you know, I think by January, December, January, we'll know much more and whether or not at that point, we need to talk to the Board of Finance about a special appropriation.
All right. Thank you.
Barry?
Again, just want to, I'm looking here at the Zoom license for 28,000 and just want to add in that reminder that we're probably going to be in this position next year. So the more we can incrementally move out of Zoom into Google Meet, we're going to be saving us that $28,000 and it's, it's going to take an incremental process to get there and soon in this move we talked about earlier to more remote learning might be a good chance to start increment incrementally move towards using Google Classroom and moving out of Zoom and saving that money.
Good point, good point. Okay, anybody else? All right. So seeing none, we'll move on to the update on the elementary school project. And Jeff, you had a, had a summary document, I guess, well, Chris put it together, so.
Yeah, Chris London put together a great document that we've been using with the building committee. As we mentioned at the last meeting, we wanted to bring more of a full update, you know, with the school projects. So hopefully everybody had a chance to, you know, to take a look at that, at that document and the final things that are left to be completed.
Jamie?
Can I just ask, the Nyonic awning, is that the back awning by where the gym door is?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I just saw it and I was like, what awning? But then I remembered that it's that back door. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so I don't know if you want to, you know, go through the, you know, entire list or have Chris talk about, you know, any of the items specifically, the repaving on the east and west side. Part of the next motion, the next agenda item. Gym floor at Lily B. Haynes, you know, waiting to do that until, you know, probably even, you know, next, next summer. But that's an item that's, you know, on there as well. And then Chris, any, as you look at that list, anything else that's jumping out that has been problematic or?
No, just, you know, just the way it's set up now is everything in yellow is in, you know, pretty much ready to go. It's going to be starting, it's going to be done pretty quickly in the next couple of months because it's already been awarded or in the case of the repaving, we're talking about that tonight. So everything yellow is ready to go, everything in blue at the bottom is done. And then there's a couple of things in green that are still in process. As mentioned, you know, the gym floor is probably going to take place next summer just because of the the fumes associated with doing that, you know, we'll wait till the schools out. And then pretty much we're coming to the end. There's a couple of things with public address systems that Flanders and Lily B. Haynes were meeting this week to finish up with the, hopefully finish up with Voice New England. And I'll be happy to close out this list as soon as I can and move on from the elementary project.
I want to, Chris, he's done a great job just picking this up, you know, when he arrived and running with a lot that was been on his plate. The building committee, kudos, you know, to them as well. They've done a lot of work and a great job, very supportive.
Okay. All right. See any other, any other questions or comments? So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is for discussion and hopefully action on the Lily B. Haynes asphalt parking is, parking lot repavement. And Jeff, you you mentioned that earlier, so.
Yeah, just to be clear, the $56,230, I think it was, is, you know, for both, both sides, the east and the west side, to finish those out. So that will complete all the paving around that, around that building.
Yeah, this one, open bid, I had three bids, this is the low bid, next bid was around 65, and then we had somebody fishing it, I would say for over 100. So this is the low bid, this is prevailing wage. This project, if you might remember, was actually originally scheduled or in the original designs, it was set aside as a holdback item. And then it was moved forward once we knew what the remaining balances of funds were. So this is really just finishing up something that was in the original project.
Yep. Okay. Any questions on this one? Anybody like to make a motion?
I will. I would like to make a motion to approve expending elementary renovation project funds to repave the asphalt parking lot west side and emergency vehicle access east side at the Lily B. Haynes Elementary School at a bid price of $56,230 as submitted by B. and W. Paving and Landscaping LLC.
Good. Maybe you want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, and a second today. I keep seeing Alexandra's name up there and it's throwing me for a loop. So, but that's okay. So we have a second? Second. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any board member want to abstain? Okay. Passes unanimously. Okay, and we're moving on to our next, next group, which is the first item, item A, which is for discussion is the board equity and inclusion follow-up to the conversations we've been having. And Jeff, you want to, you want to kick this off?
Yeah, you know, next two, you know, kind of go hand in hand, but the first one is is more aligned with the questions, you know, that we pushed out to board members of two questions. And thanks, you know, I put in the update, appreciate, you know, the responses, the Friday update, I appreciate the responses, you know, that have come back and we saw some themes within those. And, you know, we just wanted to to turn it back over to, you know, all of you to have some further discussion, you know, on your feelings and thoughts, you know, around those questions of, you know, things that we can continue to do, you know, as we move forward. And, you know, I can read the questions again if you want specifically, but, you know, it was along your, you're pertaining your feelings and thoughts regarding equity, diversity, inclusion and race. And then the second question, you know, thinking about outcomes, both short term and long term, you know, regarding equity across our district, what would you like to achieve as a board of education in a district over the coming year? So those were the two, the two questions. So again, appreciate the feedback that we did receive. I gave you the themes. I'll kind of open it up for any further discussion there and it leads into our draft statements in the next agenda item.
Anybody have any comments or further thinking on this, on this?
I I have a question.
Sure.
Are we going to compile that into a draft and submit it to the board or are we submitting it to Janelle?
Which aspect, Jamie? The the responses that came back or the?
Yeah. The board responses on what we are on our two questions, are we going to submit them to Janelle for for what we are going to further talk about as a board? Or are we going to submit them as a, to each other as a board as like a retreat item so we can reflect on it? What is the purpose of answering the questions?
Well, and Tim and I talked a little bit about that. We kind of wanted to turn that back over to all of you because some of this might be personal to individuals. We didn't want to go pushing out, you know, your information that that you sent without having a conversation about it first. So I'm happy to do, you know, whatever the board would like. I mean, I could take off names and just put all, you know, the questions and the responses that we received. So Joelle could look at them. We're still waiting to, we're trying to find a date with her to have her return, but we want to get her some information as well. So we've got a couple that will work for her. But unfortunately, Mondays are bad. So we're finding opposite board meeting week. So Mondays are bad. So that seems a bit of a problem.
So my, my thing was like, what is the purpose? So we all answered these questions and we gave them to you. Now what? Like, what, what are we going to do with the answers? Are we, you know, why did we bother answering the questions if we're not going to move anywhere forward with it? That's just my question because I, I mean, it doesn't make any sense for us to answer questions and then not do anything with them. So I just wanted to know what we were going to do with them going forward.
Right. Well, so, so what Jeff and I, we had had, we'd only received four.
We got a fifth though over the weekend.
We got a fifth? Okay, great. Oh, we almost got a four. Five and we wanted to try to get some more, some more feedback from, you know, more board member. Now, it was not an easy thing to write. It took some, some thought and 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 really, it was, you know, it was a little bit challenging. We wanted to have an opportunity to have everybody try to get some response in. We've got five out of 10, that's, that's not, not bad. And we, we then, with that, we then would want then synthesize from it what we can see. But we didn't, what we didn't want to do is we didn't want to share the information unless everybody said, okay, yep, it's good to share and how we would go about sharing it. Because again, it's, you know, pretty, pretty personal stuff and it's hard, it's hard stuff to write down. So that's kind of where, at least where our thinking was, was that. Eric, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, probably just forcing what's kind of where Jamie is. So I guess twofold. One is, you know, we picked two things that we think are important for a board of ed to do this year. And, you know, five of 10 isn't good enough. And I'm not going to worry about, but it's not. And, but I also understand and to your point, Tim, this was not easy and, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to do anytime and maybe in these times it's even harder. But maybe if there is, you know, if Jeff, Tim, I don't know, or somebody, you know, maybe there's some common themes that you said, there's some things that come out, maybe that can be shared a little bit with everyone. So the five who didn't do it might also be like, oh, that's more of the theme and the things that they kind of connect more with. And then that will lead to something. Because I, I do think we need 10 out of 10 to do, I mean, if we're going to commit, because for me, it's, I'm going to commit a lot to this and I'm willing to commit a lot of time and effort. But if we only know where half of us are, we could go completely in the wrong direction. So, so I, that's what I would like. I'd like to see some compilation. The anonymity is probably important so people feel more comfortable to say things. I'm, I'm fine with that. But I think there's probably some themes. And then if we miss any, when we send those out, then people can either anonymously or whatever say, hey, this is part we missed and it's really important to me, so we add that in. And you could do that publicly or not publicly, I don't really care. But that way, we start to frame what we want to talk about. So that would be my thought and I.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, I, Eric, I think that that's a great, a great suggestion. And I certainly would be more than glad with, with help from, with, with Jeff to take a look at the responses we've, we've got, pull out the general themes or the, or the points or counterpoints or whatever, put it in some way and feed it back to all the, all the board members. So that you can either comment directly back on that or we'll have that as our next agenda topic. I am hoping that what this is going to do is set, set the stage for, for a workshop. And it's gonna, it's gonna say, it's gonna lead to here, here's the thing we really think very, very strongly about. And quite, quite out the progress that we actually are making. Because as you'll see coming up here on the policy discussions that Jamie led us through, there was a, there was a lot of really good stuff that was, was discussed and started to address. You could really start to feel things kind of, kind of coalescing here as we, as we continued on. So, but that, that's, I think that that's a great suggestion. Anybody else have any, any points? Barry, put your hand up.
Something that, rather than try to synthesize it, you probably could just send out the original text with all the responses. So that doesn't put the onus of you, try to theme and code it. And so we see the original works out. And I was one of the people that submitted it and I have no problem having my name associated with my submission. So you can send that out with my name associated with it and the other four people that sent it in. I mean, they could just chime in whether they wanted their submission to remain anonymous or if they were okay having your name associated with it when you sent it back out to everybody. So we got an idea of the, the terrain, which the comments covered.
Yeah, okay. Jeff, could you send that then? Could you send out a note to all the board, to the board members that have responded to the, to the questions with asking, asking, is it okay to put your text out? And would you want your name attached to it? And I don't have any problems with mine being published with my name attached to it. So, but I think that people should have that opportunity to answer that. but I think that people should have that opportunity to answer that, uh, separately.
Sure.
Yeah, that's good. Good suggestion, Barry. So that, that'll give us something. And I think Jeff and I'll take a look. We'll sit, we'll sit and take a look at it and see if we can start to pull some, some common themes out of, out of it as well. So. Any other, uh, comments or thoughts? Okay, um, moving, we can then move on to the next item, which is the Board of Ed Draft Equity Statement slash with the District Equity Statement. Jeff, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, just to. Appendix A you're calling in. That's what came from, the Policy Committee took a look at it. And we, we worded, um, one, uh, one sentence, just adding in, um, some information in relation to protected classes. That was, that was the third paragraph down. And then the other one is, basically the statement that I put out, um, back in, uh, um, the last spring, uh, or actually it was May-June timeframe, um, on behalf of the district. So you've got to get two statements. The one that I had crafted is in the hands of our Equity and Inclusion District-wide Committee. So they're kind of looking at that. Um, and then obviously you have both of them in your hands here. So how we, you know, and, and as we remember from talking with Jessica Ritter, um, we have the option of, you know, creating one or using the one that you have attached here. And again, revising that if we want to, we're doing some work there. So that's kind of where we're, where we're at. Um, and if we want to have, you know, one or two, um, one on behalf of the Board, one on behalf of the.
Can I, can I just give a review of what the Policy Committee talks about?
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
Okay, so the conversation about policy was, uh, over the statement in Appendix A. Um, and we talked about putting in a modifier in there on what is discrimination? Because as we all know, discrimination is in the eye of the beholder, could be many different things. Um, and then we wanted to add in those protective classes. Um, and then Kate mentioned getting rid of that we do not tolerate any form of discrimination because of the way that it is. Discrimination again goes back to the definition. So if you leave that in, you'd have to define what is discrimination, or you can reword it so that it's not, we do not tolerate because any, as you say, discrimination could be against anything. I could wear a bunny shirt to school and it discriminates against somebody who likes bunnies. You know what I'm saying? So that's what we talked about, like what is discrimination and, um, adding in that protected class part that we talked, you'll see in the, um, policies that we were going to go over tonight. There's a whole group of just protected classes. I think we said 10, 12, I think. But that's what we talked about with regards to Appendix A.
Yep. So I think it's more, we're looking for the Board to kind of take a look at, yeah, that Appendix A and say, you know, what do we think about, you know, this, this specific document? And then, you know, also my, my statement, I'd like to, you know, we're gonna work at the Equity Inclusion Committee level, um, on that one. But we wanted to share both of them.
Any thoughts on, any, any comments, Kate?
Well, Jeff, you took it to them because you had a meeting on Friday. The policy statement is what we had drafted.
No, no, this was a meeting I had with them, um, the beginning of last week, I think it was. It was the first meeting and we talked about it and then I shared, um, not Appendix A, I shared out what I had drafted up with them. We're gonna work on that at the next meeting on October 27th.
Cause I really think as much as possible for some of these things, it might be really good to have buy-in from representatives from the, the different staff levels.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what, uh, you know, we'll, we'll work through, uh, with the, uh, with the committee.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't, I mean, does anybody, any, I mean, that sounds, it sounds like, uh, there's no, uh, by, there's no disagreement on the content or the idea of actually having some sort of a statement come out, um, that has the theme of what, what you're reading in these two, these two things. And I, I do like what Kate said. It's, it would be, it would be great to have it, um, as kind of a, as a, as a, as a one major statement that comes from, um, basically all of us, you know, um, saying that, you know, what our position is on, on racism and, and inclusion. Uh, Candace?
So I like this woman part. Now, I listened in on the policy meeting. So if, Jamie, is this the one that you guys were talking about, the intro yay or nay? Because I'm. No.
Amy, you're on mute.
That's on one of the policies and I'll cover that when I go through the minutes.
Okay, cause I like the intro. And I, I do think that I, I'm very comfortable with the statement.
Eric, I'm sorry. Jeff, did you want to say something? Then I'll turn it over to Eric.
I mean, I, I just wanted to reiterate, I like the idea of one statement. To me, it doesn't make sense to have, you know, two different statements, like a statement and then a district statement, you know, I, to me, we kind of, I select the Equity Inclusion Committee, look at the one that I had crafted, get some feedback from them, then maybe we could take both and maybe almost merge them into one document, you know, collectively. Maybe we can work through the Policy Committee again. Just a thought.
That's good. Eric?
So, um, I like, I like the statements merging them, single statement, completely agree. The one thing that I'm struggling with, and if it was mentioned, I missed it, is the context of how this is gonna go out. Like, because if we, let's just say, on, you know, Thursday, October 15th, we send this statement out. It's kind of weird. Um, like someone, my reaction would be without knowing that we just, would be like something happened. What happened at the school? Why are we saying this? Like it, so there's some, I don't, I don't know what, I don't have a great, I don't know what that is, but there's some sort form of context that we need to make sure, like why are we sending it out on, uh, Thursday, October 15th? What's the significance of that? Um, obviously if you send it out on like a Martin Luther King birthday, that's a long time from now. That might be the context, which is a great, great time to do it, but that's also, you know, three months from now. So that, that's my, uh, thought. Maybe others have thoughts on that.
Yeah. Kate, I saw you raise your hand.
Well, a couple of things. Rome wasn't built in a day, so it took a while for us. Maybe we did drag our feet a little bit, but, you know, I think we did it as quickly as, and as well as we could. So, and then, um, I had another thought, but I'm really tired and it escaped me. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, it's, it's a good point, Eric, though, um, that, um, you know, we need, need a Mecca, I need a, a way of having something come out like this that has, it can provide the, kind of the, the background or the rationale behind it. Barry, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, I did. Thank you for noting that, Tim. I think it's for like one document in the, the shorter current, um, Equity Statement, ELPS Equity Statement. I think if that's going to be merged into the other in terms of, um, if I looked at it like, uh, if I use a term like wordsmithing, the second document is, uh, pretty clean, uh, from like, uh, you'd say like an English teacher looked at it. The Equity Statement, um, would have to be wordsmithed a little bit if we kept it. So I would be all in favor of just going with Appendix A. And if there are ideas in the Equity Statement that aren't included in Appendix A, we try to weave them in there. But I think it's, Appendix A is pretty comprehensive and I think we could just stand with that alone.
Okay, good. Thank you. Hey, anybody else? Okay. All right. So I think we've got our, I think we've got our, uh, our game plan set on that. So, uh, Jeff will take, uh, will take, um, the, uh, Appendix A's, uh, Statement to, uh, his, um, uh, Diversity and Inclusion Committee for discussion and hopefully get feedback on that. And then we'll, uh, we'll bring, hopefully we'll have something to bring, bring back to the Board. Um, I think Eric's got a, was a very good point about, uh, making sure we have the right context of bringing something like this out so that, that people can understand what, 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 why in fact this is, this is, is happening. Uh, so I think that's really good. Kate, you got, wanna add something?
Just real quickly, I just wanted to say that I'm sure, I really think that we should move ahead with it and not postpone it. And I'm sure that there's some, some holidays, some birthdays, some hero we can celebrate between like October 15th and November 15th. So just making it, you know, find a holiday, make a holiday. So, yeah.
Yep, good. Yep, we will. Okay. All right. So next, next item up or next several items up is the, uh, output from the Policy, uh, Committee Meeting. And, uh, we have several first readings on, on, uh, some, uh, policies. So.
Just be easier if I.
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie. You can, yep.
Okay. So the first one that's up for discussion is BOE Draft Policy Equity Statement. Oh no, we did that one. Sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Um, it's the Minority Recruitment Plan. And what you will see is, um, the policy from, shit, from, it's a black, I'm doing two different computers. Sorry. It's the compute, the statement from Shipman and Goodwin that we would like to, um, make our own. Um, what we did was we took, uh, one paragraph out of our old policy, which is that opening paragraph. And then we've added it to the updated state statute recruitment policy. And we fleshed it out a little bit. So if anyone has any questions or comments, thoughts, we would love to hear them.
And one of the discussion points we had at the Policy Committee Meeting on this with, uh, both Jeff and Amy was to make sure that what, what was being committed to in terms of, uh, minority, uh, recruitment, um, is, is it in fact achievable? And, and, uh, they both felt that, that, that these were achievable, uh, items. So.
Right.
That's important.
And there was also conversation about talking to Learn and ARCRAC, um, and about how to adopt different minority recruitment policy techniques, um, from students, recruiting them to teachers, um, and reaching out to more of those colleges that have minority teachers in the student population.
Yeah, yeah, maybe I can just. Words about this, this, this came out of, um, the Learn, um, Boarded Meeting and Kate Erickson, is I crack, uh, which is another, uh, risk, um, large risk. And this involves basically bringing student minorities, signing them to a, um, a mentor and having them, have the district, uh, pay them as a para, para professional as well as paying their tuition. Uh, and this is a way that would help bring minorities, um, into our, into our district with the goal of hopefully acting, um, them for, uh, their first teaching, uh, in, in endeavor. This would, uh, is something that has this price tag associated with it. And there's a lot of detail associated with it, but it's something that I think that, um, is very doable and can get off the ground, uh, quite quickly. In fact, um, Learn was hoping to have this implemented, uh, in the, uh, summer of, um, uh, 2021. So, uh, I thought that that was kind of exciting. And Jeff was, uh, was, is, was, uh, um, I'm gonna be following up with, uh, with, uh, the Learn and other superintendents about this. So Jeff, was, was there anything you wanted to add on that?
Just one, if we can get, regionally, if we can get 15, um, individuals to partake in this, you know, again, across the region, um, it, it's doable. Uh, and, you know, we could have, you know, one in our district and we gather, you know, 15 other districts or Learn might be able to take a couple. Um, and then it's at the, just to be clear, it's at the elementary level, um, only. Um, but, uh, but still a great opportunity. Uh, so we're definitely looking into it. And, Kate and I will be connecting. I connected with her last week a little bit and we're following up, um, this week.
Okay. Uh, Candace or, I, I can't tell who raised their hand first. I'll, I'll go with Candace and then Eric. And then Jill.
I think the policy is great. Um, and I did listen in on the, the Policy Committee and this really piqued my interest. I think that that is a great, great, great idea, uh, with the crack initiative. And if we can do it regionally, I think that it would be so incredibly beneficial. I really loved it when you guys, I even, I'm reading my notes from it. I think that is great.
Good. Eric?
Second with what Candace, this was, this is, I thought it's great. I, I really liked what was there. For me, this is, everything's important. For me, this is, for me, this is the most important one. Because I think if we get, have more teachers, it just changes this kind of culture and everything in the school. Cause you have more people, um, in leadership positions. So if we get this right, I think a lot of others, they won't take care of themselves, but it'll make everything, I think, go a lot better. So I'm really excited that what you just described sounds great. I think we need to do whatever we need to, whatever we can do to, attract, um, teachers to the school. That would be fantastic. So, uh, fully support it. Thanks, Jamie and the team for holding that together. Jill?
Yes, I just, uh, want to make a comment. I understand and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. Doesn't New Britain, the New Britain, uh, School System have, uh, an individual on staff that specifically works to recruit, uh, recruit students of different minorities? I saw something about, and I can call the school and find out. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Um, I, I don't know anything specifically about New Britain, but I, I do know that districts do have, I think, some, some various positions that might support, you know, reaching out, um, along those lines and trying to, those recruiters.
I'm just wondering if we should talk to them first before we, I'll, I'll call New Britain School, I'll call the Board of Ed or whatever and get the information for you. But maybe we should speak to them or, or unless we want to recreate the wheel. I don't know. I'm just putting it out there as a source of information. Someone who's already been through a school system that's already been there and has a person on staff. And I think I met him at a, uh, a meeting somewhere along the way in the past four or five years. So, okay, so it sounds like you're not aware of that, but that's, that's fine. I'll find out more and send you an email, his name and contact information unless you want to make it specifically all homegrown.
No, no, sis, who's looking to reach out, Jill? Send me, uh, you know, any of the contact nation. I'm happy to follow up on it and see. Always hurts to reach it or doesn't, never hurts to reach out.
Oh, I really, why recreate the wheel? Thank you.
Okay, all right. So Jamie, that's, uh, that was the first reading on, uh.
One, just one second, because I'm noticing, uh, a boo-boo. At that first introduction paragraph, it should say the Eastline Board of, Kate, Board of Education believes, not to this end, the Board of Education believes. Should read the Eastline Board of Education believes.
Yep. Yes, we'll fix that, Jamie. Thanks.
All right. So then.
We'll move on to the next item.
The next one is just non-discrimination students. Um, I don't know what we have on here. All right. So this is the policy, and then you'll see underlined policy, that's going to be the new inclusions that Shipman and Goodwin has made to our old policy. So anything that's underlined is going to be new stuff that we've added in. Um, and we had conversation on this around a coming up policy on discrimination about genetic information, because that's found in the staff non-discrimination policy. The genetic information does not need to be in the student policy because it's in there for hiring purposes in the staff policy. So it does not need to be in the student policy. That is the follow-up question on that for those of you who were at policy with us.
Also in the, uh, in the community, uh, one is what.
Yes, and also the community one, it doesn't need to be in there either. Thanks, Jeff. So I don't know if anyone has anything add, questions, statements about the non-discrimination student policy.
Again, we're updating from, uh, our, our student policy from 2017.
Yeah. Okay. So let's see, none again.
I would just actually like to note that this policy, you will see that protected classes that I was talking about at the bottom of the second paragraph is the list of the protected classes that we were talking about putting in the Appendix A Statement. For those of you who didn't have it in front of them.
Okay. Okay, Jamie, good.
So the next up is the non-discrimination staff, which is where you're going to see that genetic information that I was questioning in paragraph three. But it only needs to be in the non-discrimination staff policy. It does not need to be in any of the other non-discrimination policies. And you'll pull that up and it'll be the same thing. The underlying stuff will be the stuff that shipment and Goodwin flagged for review. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments.
Anybody? Nope.
Okay. So then the next one is a completely new policy. It is a board operation policy. So it's going to be another non-discrimination policy. And it's going to read the, almost word for word, the exact same as the other ones, except for it doesn't have that genetic component in it. And this is going to be a completely new policy. I don't know if anyone has any comments, questions, statements? Right?
Okay.
The next one is bullying. Right, and this, for those of you who have been here for a while, know that we usually do this one every year. Because the board, the state makes a change to it just about every year. So this is going to be the same. There are additions that Jessica has highlighted for us that are going to be changes, the same as the other ones. I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions.
And just to be clear, that addition was number 19 on that, that policy, a couple of pages in, with the climate, relationship climate, school climate plan.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, and then the next one is the student dress and grooming policy, which we had a lot of discussion on. We're kind of gonna, our conversation is cut basically a piecemeal. We're gonna keep our old policy, but we're gonna add in some policy as regulation. Because those of you who have students, and especially right now, there's no lockers. So they're wearing their coats, they're carrying their backpacks, they're wearing masks, which goes against everything in the dress code policy. But we're kind of using the, the dress part of it as a regulation and just doing our belief statement as the first two. Jeff, am I correct on that?
That is correct, yes. We pulled from the old, which is a very outdated policy, but we liked the specific language at the top. And we pulled that, that piece.
If anyone has any comments. But that student dress, those ABCs would be more regulation than policy.
Yeah. All right. Oh, Kate, Kate?
Well, I just had an idea. And perhaps this could be somehow addressed in a different part of the policy manual. Just that our students are a reflection of us. And we want them to be ambassadors for the mission of Eastline Schools. So I'm just thinking somehow, and, and part of that is how you dress, part of it is how you talk. And then, I don't know, what you do, I guess. So just thinking maybe that could be.
Anyone else? Barry? Barry?
Yep. You're on mute, Barry.
You're on mute, Barry.
Okay, now I'm unmuted.
Yep.
It's crazy, mute, unmute. It gets confusing to me. It's so tough to get old. As I look through these, the eye that I keep looking for is the mention of learning. And just on these, just a recommendation or a suggestion, the committee to go back and look through them to see where you could engage language and learning. For example, in the first sentence, it says clothing appropriate to the school situation. You could strengthen that a little bit by something appropriate to enhance school students' learning. You know, somehow to get the notion that all these policies are not situational, but the ultimate purpose of the school is to enhance school student learning. So the more that you can include that phrase in there, I think it would bring it back to the purpose that we have for the schools.
That's a, that's a good point, very similar to what Kate said.
Well, we talked about that in terms of dress especially, that the kids need to be comfortable, warm or cool enough. But then, so it doesn't distract from learning. So.
Exactly.
Okay, good. You got one more?
We have one more. Hold on. All right, and the next, whoops, wrong one. No, I don't have that one. I gotta find it in my stack. Sorry. I thought I had the full, I do have it. I just titled it wrong. Actually, no, I don't. Where is it? All right, Jeff, can you start it while I find it?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Just in the attachment, the, the only, we fixed a typo at the top, the committee found. But really, the change is number four on this. Provide all students an effective basic education that does not discriminate. And this is where we brought in the protected class component. Yeah, so you can see we added in on the basis of, and we pulled that right from the non-discrimination policies and added it in here. So we, so we had. And that was the, that was the only change on, on this.
I don't know where I put that one. But yes, thank you, Jeff.
No problem. Okay, so those are, those are the several policies.
Barry has a question.
I'm sorry.
Not a question again, just, this is another example on the first sentence there. It says materials necessary to meet the needs of instruction. That says that basically are, you know, that puts like the, the purpose in terms of instruction. But we could change that to say necessary to enhance student learning, to shift it a little bit so that the thing that always comes to the forefront is we're, we're about enhancing student learning.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot, Barry. Yeah, well, you know, the next policy committee meeting too, we can, we can talk further about that. But I like that idea.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Thank you very much. It was a very good policy committee meeting. I'm moving on now, administration reports. Jeff, do you have anything else to add to us?
I'm just, just two quick ones. I just wanted to make mention, this past Friday, we did have the full day faculty equity and inclusion professional development. So it seemed to go very well from the feedback we received from, in our staff. You know, they had a full morning of working with the great schools partnership. And then in the afternoon, they worked in their own departments, grade levels and teams at the middle school level, the teams. It, it was, the feedback we got, people really kind of, they dove in. They appreciated the conversations that they were able to have in the afternoon. So I think it was a positive outcome. We had an action planning template that we're collecting, you know, from all of the schools. At the end of the day, we brought everybody back together for a report out from each school. So I think that was beneficial for the whole, you know, the whole district wide, you know, to hear that report out. So that went very well. And we're going to continue the conversations at the equity and inclusion, our next steps. And I've got all the chat feedback that we'd received too, which I'll share with that, that committee too. I just wanted to make sure, the last two board meetings ago, you would, oh, actually, I'm sorry, the last board meeting, you had asked about enrollment numbers. So I sent those in a recent update too. Just want to make sure everybody got that. If you didn't, feel free, let me know. And I'll, I'll kick that over to you again. But just gives you a full picture of where the numbers, the numbers are. I think, you know, we're, we're still down, you know, in numbers. But I think that's specific, you know, you got a lot less K numbers, which makes me concerned for students back for this year and didn't send them. Now we'll send them next year on top of the original number of kids that would be coming. So we got to keep that in mind as we look at next year and think about numbers. And then obviously, you know, the over 30, you know, families that homesold, you know, their, their kids as well. So that's all, that's all I had. Everything else has been COVID related.
Okay, all right, very good. Amy?
I'm just going to keep cohorting every day. And moving students and being there for parents, making sure they're in a good place. The biggest news probably is that our final shipment is coming for devices. And so by Friday, I will officially have them all in district. The downside is I'm getting hundreds all at the same time delivered, which should be, it's a good problem to have, as Lee pointed out to me. But yeah, and we did go ahead and send out to parents projected deployment windows. I have my meeting tomorrow in regards to just some protocols with the instructional texts and how we're going to support parents, so finalizing that. So I'd love to have, be able to show you some of that documentation in my Friday update this week, because we're getting real, really close. But it looks like my pre-K, K1 students will be first out of the gate, because those iPads, they're ready. The other news is that we are deploying all the document cameras to the teachers. So now they all came in, all 271 of them. We've deployed to the building-based instructional texts. And then they are deploying to the teachers to make sure we're not congregating staff together, but we're actually delivering them. So what's nice is now our teachers have a document camera. So they actually have another camera in the room to be able to use with students, but also to be able to use with, on documents. So I included that in our updates. So I'm happy to say that your purchases are in. So it was almost a four-month anniversary. We ordered them, we had the meeting with Board of Finance on June 10th. Our order went through at Dell on June 11th. And we got word on October 11th that they were coming. So just a quick update on that. But thank you for all of your support and understanding what we're attempting to do in the best interest of your students. And we're trying and we'll continue to hit the mark and make sure we're doing the best that we can do.
Okay, good, very good. Arianna, anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm good. Budget, budgets went out last week. So I'm working on that and they're due mid-November.
Good, good. That brings us, let's see, committee reports. Well, I think policy, I think we've covered.
I have one more.
Okay.
There's only one that we did not talk about tonight, that we did talk about a policy, and it was the Equity Education Opportunity Policy. And Jessica's statement to us, shipment and Goodwin does not have a sample policy for us to borrow or to use or to model. So we're going to reach out to our local RASKs and maybe crack and see if they have one that we can somewhat model ours around, because ours is very, very out of date. The last time we looked at it was 1999. So we would like to keep it because we believe in it. But shipment and Goodwin doesn't have one for us. So we're going to do some homework and try to find one that we can model and then vet it with shipment and Goodwin for policy.
Okay, good, excellent. All right, so that brings us to board comments and future agenda topics. Anybody have anything, anything, comments, anything they want to share? Barry?
I'm still working on, you know, down the future, we're going to have a meeting and talk about some stuff going forward. And I'm still trying to figure out like, how I can get like information and ideas out there. And the last time, I intrigued and curious about the idea that our elementary schools are category one schools are up there. And we dropped a category two for the middle and category three for the high school. And I've been trying to, to dig into that and find out like what's, what are perhaps some of the perspectives on that. And one of the interesting studies I found in the state was the high correlation between socioeconomic condition of a district and its performance index. So in other words, the richer index, the richer districts score higher on the performance index. And when they did regression analysis on it, it was like about 60% of the variance associated with the district performance index was associated to the socioeconomic condition. So what that means for us is that when, because we have good parents and good families, when kids come into the elementary schools, they get, if they're scoring like 75 on the performance index, they're getting like a 45 or 50-point head start simply because of the conditions they're coming out of in their, their homes. And they were getting a good bounce in our elementary schools because of that. But then that performance index drops down in the middle school and the high school, which somehow means that, that initial bounce we're getting is dissipating. And so it's something, and the growth, the growth figures in the middle school are way below what they are in the elementary schools. So I think, and that's, it's just a curious question to look at, like, why is that happening? And it particularly came to today when we're talking about beginning just the high school, doing the four days in the high school. We have to do four days in the elementary, in the middle school too, because they are dropping down also. And the contact and engagement, as a couple of people already talked about with teachers, is absolutely vital. And if we don't do something to at least engage them in the middle school, we're going to see the, the drop in the middle school continue as it has in past years. So again, for the future, it's just like, okay, we're doing really well with the growth and performance in the elementary schools. The questions of what's happening to the drop of that growth in the middle, in the high schools. And an immediate step we can make right now is to make sure we include the middle school and that four days of contact with their teachers as we're doing in the high school.
Very good.
I'll keep working on this stuff.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Amy, it looks like you're agreeing, you're nodding your head yes. So it's good.
Yeah. Very.
Kate?
Am I, am I good? Okay, a couple of things I'm wondering about is what can we do to support the parents? Are parents feeling like they're getting enough support is, is the question, I guess, I'm basically asking. And with that, is there a possibility to do, to have our social workers, psychologists and counselors be more of a point guard kind of thing for some of our parents? And just really helping with that communication? Because I didn't really hear too much about that. So I was just kind of wondering about that, if there's some way that we can help with that.
Yeah, good, good suggestion. I just have one, one thing.
Eric?
Tim freeze, or it's just me? Okay.
Tim, yeah, Tim froze.
Tim froze. We should get a screen capture of him freezing.
Tim, are you back? I think we might have lost.
He's going to need to re, he's going to need to sign out and sign back in. That's the only way he's going to freeze himself.
Oh, I think he did. Oh, there he is.
There you go.
Nobody liked my speech.
It was really good.
Just. So I just wanted, just wanted to thank Jeff and, and his team for all, what they've been doing. I, Jeff, I just don't, I just want to make sure, I'll, I'll say something like that Jill typically says, but we want to make sure you take care of yourself, okay? Because you've been putting in enormous number of hours. And I, I think, I swear, the phone probably rings all constantly. And the, the contact tracing and all the phone work that you, everybody's been doing to try to, try to get to the right answer to whether or not to keep our schools open has been, been enormous. I just, people just don't realize what actually is going on behind the seams, behind the scenes to make all this happen. So thanks, thanks to everybody.
No, thanks, Dave. I want to thank Jackie too, just a shout out to her. You know, she's, you've been right with me, you know, on the weekends now, you know, a, a, a call away and is jumping on the computer and helping out, you know. So kudos to her and I appreciate her efforts.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jackie.
Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie.
Okay, and with that, Jackie, we'll ask somebody to make a motion.
Eric has a comment.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I missed it.
That, that's okay. It, it, real quick, can we get an update, Jeff? Not now, but in, in the future, just on kind of extracurricular activities? Or it can be extracurriculars or maybe at the elementary is what they're doing kind of in play activities or something, whatever they're doing outside of the academics. outside of the academics at each level, given the current situation? And then what happens when schools are closed? What happens? So what happens when kids are there and then what happens when kids aren't there? Just to make sure that they're we're doing something. I know in the letter that was wrote, they mentioned some idea from the elementary school. The parent had mentioned something, but it'd be just interesting, good to know extracurricular, both from sports to band, to anything else. It'd be good to just get a quick understanding of that.
Sure. Yep. Go ahead.
No, I was saying maybe we could have our AAA meeting at some point. It keeps getting rescheduled, so that would be great to have there.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
All right, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
And is that it? Are we going to vote? Tim, are you frozen again?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 bye.
Tim, I think, I can't tell if he's frozen or not.
Thanks a lot.
Good night.